All right, I'm gonna call the March 9, 2021 meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance. It seems like it's been too long since we've had several people in the audience, so welcome. It's good to see some masked faces out there. Couple announcements. We were notified this week that North Carolina DOT is gonna be doing some significant road maintenance at Rottleville Falls or near Rottleville Falls on the Highlands Road. They're gonna be closing the road from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. each day with one-lane, signalized traffic. Let's see the dates. It'll be the last week of March. I'm sure they're gonna be doing some more as we get a little bit closer. It's only, what, two weeks, three weeks? So they'll be doing some more announcements as we get closer, but I would say Buck Creek Road's about to get very popular. Lori, do you have an update on Macon Middle School?
Sure. Said I was going now.
Happy birthday. Maybe happy birthday to the county.
Yeah, happy birthday to the county.
You getting the public hearing? You doing work there?
No.
No, no. I was just gonna give you an update on the bond sale. So the bond sale was yesterday morning between 10:00 and 11:30 a.m. It was very successful. We actually received orders for six and a half times of the amount more bonds than we had available to sell. So, you know, we had right at 19 million to sell. We received orders for 125 million, which is a good thing.
Wow.
Because that allowed the underwriter to go back where they were oversold in the different years to negotiate, you know, with the people that had put in the orders and lower the interest rates a little bit. So the county's all-in true interest cost was 1.81%. So we were very pleased with that number. If you're -- you know, when we first started this process a few months ago about looking at bank loan versus public sale, the best bank loan we had for a 20-year term was an all-in true interest cost of 2.16%. So again, we got all interest, all-in true interest cost of 1.81%. So the total debt service payments by going a public sale versus a bank loan is gonna save the county about $672,000 over the life of the loan. So we rolled the dice and gambled a little bit, and it paid off, so.
Lori, I'm gonna get you to negotiate the financing in my home next time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements? Right, we'll all rise, observe a moment of silence. We need to keep our interim county attorney, Kim Carpenter, her mother passed away, so she is not with us tonight, and Vice Mayor of Franklin, Barbara McCray. Let's ask, come after a moment, let's get Commissioner Shields to lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do not have any -- sorry, can you hear me okay? I didn't realize my microphone was up. We don't have any public hearings, a public comment period. Chris, you might hand me the sheet, is it over there? Thank you, sir. Forgot to grab it. All right, James Plank, Friends of the Greenway.
The first meeting I've come to, the public comments section, how long do I have to speak, roughly?
We try and keep it around five minutes. There's some leniency there.
All right, okay, I'll be as tidy as I can in my time here. All right, thank you very much. I come to you today as the chairman for the Board of Directors for Friends of the Greenway, and at our February board meeting, which Mr. Gary Shields is the council rep, you know, the commissioner rep, he suggested it's been a long time, if ever, someone's come to talk to the county commissioners, let people know what's going on on the Greenway, what we're doing, and to kind of get us back in the public eye. The last four or five years has been difficult for us. You know, our office is right there where they closed off the bridge for three years, almost did us in. We're just getting back on our feet, and then COVID hit, so it's been a tough few years for us to get going. But we are alive and we're kicking. As you know, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our offices are at 573 East Main Street, and it was established back in 2001 with the purpose of serving the public through restoration, protection, and enhancement of the natural resources of the Greenway. It stretches along the Little Tennessee River and Cartugia Creek. We currently have seven board members. We're allowed to have up to 15, according to our charter, so any volunteers, we'd love to have more board members. We do have a pretty strong membership, over 130 right now, and we give more every week, so it's keeping us afloat and keeping us alive here. We are basically funded through annual membership fees. We have a small coffee shop that we get sales from, a gift shop, donations, and we have two local artisan craft fairs, which we just started in the last couple of years, which have been very successful for us, and the vendors love it. At the -- prior to our last meeting, the Board of Directors, we had a strategy and planning meeting, and we decided that over the next year, we're really gonna focus on identifying and emphasizing the historical significance of the Little Tennessee River, how it all plays into the cultural heritage of our community here. It has a long and storied history from, you know, the bartram has been there and walked those paths, walked those shores, with these significant stops at the Niquasi Mount and so forth. All this has been documented quite well. Some of the things we're working on, all right, are signage. We wanna improve the educational and informational signage that comes along the Greenway. There's so many things on the Greenway that are just there that people don't know the history behind, how it got there. We have three bridges, you know, each of them have a history, and how they were built, and who paid for them, and we're trying to get all that up to speed. There's a area behind the library. It's on the Cartugia Creek bluff area, and it's been designated as a North Carolina Natural Heritage Program Nature Area, and it's had that designation for several years. It's a very unique environment that's not found anywhere else in the western Carolinas, just because of the trees and the plants. There are some endangered plants back there. All of that needs to be protected. So the problem with that area now is that it's used a lot, people walk through it, but people have walked, not on the trails, but have made their own trails. They've cut the corners off the switchbacks, they've made trails going directly down the fall line, all of which leads to erosion and compromise of the hillside. So we're gonna try and work on, A, again, signage, to alert people that they're not supposed to do that, to highlight the area as a natural resource, and we're gonna try to get some volunteers to help repair the trails and cut off some of the parts where people aren't supposed to be going, kind of preserve that area. All those freelance trails, we're just gonna try and get rid of. Also on our agenda for this year is a partnership with the Niquasi Initiative concerning a heritage apple project. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that, but about a half mile north of the bridges, right off the side of the trail, there's a very old apple tree. It's a heritage apple, and I can't remember exactly what variety it is, anybody? I can't remember off the top of my head. But it was spotted, actually, by, I believe, David Anderson, who works with the Niquasi Initiative, he's a -- and he is the horticulturist with the Eastern Ban of the Cherokee, and this tree is enormous. For an apple tree, it's probably 12 or 14 inches in diameter, it's very old. That's his thing. He spotted it, and that kind of led us to the assumption that we need to protect that thing. It's been there a very long time. We don't know where it came from, who planted it, but it is a historic piece of natural habitat there. The plans are now they're going to put in a orchard around that tree with other heritage apple trees, and a forage garden full of naturally occurring vegetable, you know, vegetables, plant life that were traditionally used by Native Americans and so forth. So that's a good thing. Let me see. We are implementing, right now, as a matter of fact, what we call the HOPS project. You may not know it, but about 100 yards south of the Centennial Circle there, there are Native American hops growing. Those are not known to grow in this area naturally, they had to be planted there. We're assuming that came either, a couple of places, either the native population planted them hundreds of years ago, and they're just a remnant holding on, or they were planted by some of the first settlers that were farming that land in the floodplain of the river. Our goal is to preserve them, protect them, and make a, along the Greenway, an observation spot, just a significant historical spot where we can show how they were cultivated in the past, how they're cultivated now, but just develop that with signage and historical data so that we can add another spot on the Greenway, tying us into the history of the end of the region here. Okay? Let me see. That's a few things on the Greenway we're gonna do at the Greenway offices. We're still moving forward with new landscaping. It has not escaped us that there are big things happening on the east end of Franklin. There's gonna be a lot of money dumped in there, there's gonna be a lot of improvements made by the line with the cultural corridor that's being developed, and we're front-row center for all that, and we don't want to be the ugliest house in the neighborhood. We want to get up front of that and be the nicest house in the neighborhood, so we can kind of set the tone. So we're landscaping the front and the sides. We're planning on putting a garden in the back along the riverfront, which has an observation platform that looks down on the Greenway, which will tie in part of the HOPS project, tie in the apple tree project. We'll have a dye garden for plants that are used to dye fabrics and so forth, just another informational and educational spot along the Greenway that people can enjoy and learn something when they come in. Internally, we're still working at making this, the Greenway office, more of a welcome center for the Greenway. We're hoping to eventually get to a point where we can have educational courses above the Greenway, whether we have art classes, photography classes, so forth, that we can give something to the community at the Greenway, so they can come in at low cost and get things they may not get anywhere else. Let me see here. Of course, we always have tons of documentation and stuff, we need to get organized, but there's no shortage of projects for us to get involved with, no shortage of projects that need work. Again, one thing that's looking in the future, I would say a big thing is, and I think we're gonna talk about it tonight, is the interconnector of the two sections underneath the bridges. I believe that's on the agenda tonight, which is, thank you. The other thing is the state of the Greenway in itself. There's a lot of areas that are in significant disrepair. We've had a lot of flooding, a lot of erosion, part of the loop by the Centennial Circle down there is just about up to the pavement, falling off. There's two or three other areas that are just very bad. They really need some money put at it that, you know, that we need to get fixed. We also just need people. All these projects we have rely on individuals and people civic-minded to sit on the Board of Directors, to help us make these decisions, and just to be hands to help carry out the actual work that needs to get done, so. Right now, we're not sticking our hand out for money yet, but, you know, just little projects need to get done. With that, do you have any questions for me that I will do my best to try to answer?
Well, Chairman, I'll just add that on the bank restoration, I did talk to Doug Johnson at the Extension Service. If you remember, the money they got before for bank restorations for farming areas, but he's gonna, we're gonna ask Doug if he can pursue money for recreation areas. We did that behind where the community building is. We did get that money at one time, so we will pursue that with the Extension Service, Mr. Manager. Do you think that's the best idea? I mean, there's always, we know we can get the money for farming. With recreation, for some reason, it's a little tougher, but we'll give that a shot.
Okay, well, appreciate that. That's, I just don't want to see anybody hurt down there, and it's, some places are really, really close to falling in.
Jim, I'm gonna take an opportunity to introduce some of your people.
Oh, yeah. My support here. From my own cheering section here, my wife, Pat, this is Rita St. Clair, Tom, Elena, George, all board members that are, "Do More With Less" is our thing, you know, you only have a few, so.
Why don't you ask Ms. St. Clair how many years she's been involved in here?
No, I'm not gonna ask that.
Ask her. The folks need to know that. Ms. St. Clair, would you please stand and tell us how long you've been involved with the Greenway and Frog?
Since about 2014, I believe, that I belong to the Franklin Bird Club, and the frogs came to that group and said, "We'd love to have a representative," and that's where I've been ever since.
And she really is the --
We appreciate it.
She really is the glue that kind of holds us together, so we appreciate her immensely. And George, thank you very much. George is part of the bird club as well. All those bluebird nesting boxes, that's his work. He puts them up, he maintains them, he cleans them, he repairs them, so we thank you for that, too, George.
Elena oversees the butterfly garden volunteers.
Yep, and she directs her husband Tommy along.
And the community garden is cranking back up this year.
Oh, it's not the community, oh, it is for you.
It is. The demand is done, and the plots have done, and been, we've had, we could have sold three times as many as any, because they missed last year, you know, so.
Oh, definitely.
It's gonna crank back up.
Good, wonderful. Thank you, Jim.
All right, Jim. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Nerelle Kirkland.
Well, gentlemen, you can't see the smile on my face, but have you enjoyed your 13-month vacation? You mentioned you haven't seen certain people, and I haven't been here since last January, so it's good to be back. There are some accolades that are in order. I think everybody here would stand and clap along with me, thank you for doing the job you do. I don't think any of us, other than 1945, 1941, have seen a year like 2020, and we really appreciate your standing in the saddle and doing your work. I do want to mention that Jerry and Terry, Terry Browning, who do the work out on the Greenway is their livelihood. They're very faithful, courteous, and diligent, and we're really lucky to have them. Now, for the tough stuff. As you five know, I've been coming at you for years, talking about the Greenway, and I'll introduce you, Mr. Young, to my persistence. We've really got to do something. As you just heard, there are two sections that I denoted on here where if you don't act within a few months, nature is gonna come along and sweep the underpinnings of the Greenway away, and all of a sudden, a two-day project is gonna become a three-week major expense. You've already experienced that on the northern section, I think, six years or so ago, we had to put boulders in there to shore it up, and that's what we've got to avoid. But for the safety of people walking the Greenway, there are several places left over from Hurricane Ivan, and talk about someone being devoted to the Greenway. I've been active here since 2002. The track hoe made some very bad surface indentations. Nobody's ever gotten around to fixing them. And so I've, if the map is clear and the legends speak for themselves, those are the key points on the Greenway proper that need to be addressed. From my standpoint, who like to bicycle, I can't run or walk after my paralysis, but I can bicycle, but I can't go on the southern section, because you've got three sections there that are still gravel, and that's far too unsafe. The points that I've made here, I estimate, would definitely be less than $20,000 total, and with some volunteer services from the paving company, maybe you could even save on that. So it's high time we get on this. We've read in the paper that you've come through some money that you didn't expect. Please don't put it all toward the schools, they're very vital and important, and of course, we want to educate our children and keep them safe. But us old folks, we need some attention, too. After all, we're the ones that pay the taxes. Do you have my phone number if anybody needs to call me? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to stick to the board? Don't want, going to us? Any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to remove 9c.
Remove 9c.
Mr. Gibbs can't be with us tonight. He informed me of that earlier today due to COVID-19 protocol.
Okay.
Also, we need to remove item 11f, grand agreement with Boston West to expand broadband services. We're not going to get to that tonight this month. We also need to move under new business, and we have Mr. Jenkins here, who's gonna be giving us a update, which will entail a request by Skyrunner to locate equipment on the courthouse to provide the Lyndon B. Johnson Jock Court Center with broadband internet service. That's something we've been working on for about three years now, and we're glad to see that come to fruition. Mr. Jenkins is here, gonna tell us a little bit more about that. Also --
Where did you want to put that down?
On 10, it will be 10a, under whole business. And if we could, on e, lease of Macon Middle School with Macon County Board of Education, we need to add an e1 there, and it would be to authorize the county manager to execute the construction contract on that project. We approved the construction firm at the last meeting, but Lori and I were discussing today, and I don't think we, that I was authorized to execute the contract, so we'll go ahead and firm that up here tonight. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at this time.
Any other additions, changes? You get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hickman. Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor? Moving on to reports and presentations, resolution recognized in April 18th to the 24th, 2021, as Macon County Volunteer Week. Patrick Beckton-Fort and Jennifer Hallfield, welcome.
Thank you. And obviously, Patrick is not here.
Patrick is not here.
He sends his regrets. Are y'all good if I take the mask off?
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, good evening, and thank you for letting me talk about something I'm truly, truly passionate about at the senior center, and that's our amazing volunteers. First things first, they are the best. We have been truly blessed with some of the most dedicated volunteers around, and I can't brag on them enough. As I know you are all too familiar with, COVID-19 has made impacts all over Macon County, and our volunteers fell victim to that, too, through 2020. Yet, the approximate 50 volunteers that have remained active alongside the staff, they persevered, and they continue to serve the seniors in Macon County. We did lose probably about half of our volunteers, who were afraid to continue due to COVID-19, but those who remained are to be commended for their dedication. In calendar year 2020, our volunteers donated 4,386 hours to Macon County senior services. To compare, in 2019, it was about 8,000 hours, so there was a huge, huge impact on volunteer hours. And according to the independent sector, those 4,000 and plus hours are worth about $119,000 to Macon County. And one question, what happened to our volunteers? Simple answer, COVID-19 happened. When our building closed, many of those volunteers weren't able to come into programs like Adult Day, and then many also became concerned about their own health, and they stepped back from volunteering, and we hope it's a temporary step back. But I didn't want this to undermine the great work that had been done. Without the commitments from those volunteers, there is no way that my staff could have delivered meals, led Zoom classes, and helped seniors with open enrollment for the last year. These volunteers contribute so much in our county. When COVID-19 began, our staff and volunteers didn't miss a beat. One day, we were operating as normal, and the next day, we had flipped and become a drop-through meal program with no participants in the building at all, and we were providing home-delivered meals with half our volunteers. Just a couple areas that have remained strong, and I wanted to kind of share some numbers, is our SHIP, which is the State Health Insurance Information Program. I have one paid staff person and three volunteers in that. They counseled 400 individuals over the telephone during open enrollment from October 15th to December 7th. Those three volunteers contributed about 500 hours to us in 2020, and that was learning a whole new process. That was via the telephone. They were used to having people sit across from them at their desk. That was putting some volunteers working on laptops, never worked on a laptop. So it was some great challenges, but Karen was, she persevered with them, and she got them all comfortable with using the computer and the phone, so they did some great numbers. We don't have financial savings yet, but we'll have those numbers soon on what kind of savings those programs were made. Our activities volunteers provided almost 630 hours in 2020, and that was only down from about 725 hours in 2019. But the amazing part are most of those 630 hours came from three volunteers. They are ones who are now teaching a lot of our Zoom classes for us, along with a couple paid staff, but they are leading 16 weekly Zoom activity classes for our participants. We actually have participants from all over the country participating in those Zoom classes, so they are coming from as far away as Phoenix, Arizona, to participate in our Zoom classes. Home-delivered meals, they have remained strong despite losing half our volunteers. Those volunteers and home-delivered meals contributed over 3,000 hours in 2020. And since we lost about half of those drivers, obviously, my staff couldn't keep up with all of it, so fortunately, Kim Angel and her crew from Transit were gracious enough to help us deliver meals. They still help us deliver meals, a couple, about every day during the week, they're delivering at least a couple routes for us, so we can make sure our home-delivered folks are getting meals. Just so you know, in 2020, out between the volunteers and the staff, we delivered 16,714 hot meals and 4,000 frozen meals to our homebound seniors in Macon County. That's a lot more than we normally are delivering on those meals. In addition, we served over, in 2020, over 22,000 hot meals to our congregate participants, and that was mainly through our drive-through at the center. Just to kind of compare, in 2019, we served about 11,000 congregate meals. So we are still seeing about 100 people every single day coming through our drive-through right now. You ask a little about these volunteers, our active volunteers right now range in age from 43 to 90 Our active volunteers right now range in age from 43 to 91. Most of our volunteers are in their 70s and 80s that help us at the center. There is not enough great things that I can say about those folks. They are just tremendous, and their commitment to meeting the needs of our community is unmatched. And my role over the senior center has been blessed and enhanced by having these group of volunteers. So I'm asking you tonight if you would please help us to honor their continued efforts by recognizing April 18th through 24th as Macon County Volunteer Week. And I think y'all have the resolutions in your packet, so any questions you guys have on our wonderful group of volunteers?
I'll just add as liaison to the senior citizen center, we had a Zoom call, I guess...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And it is amazing to see the energy that these folks have, wanting to get back to the regular routine. But more important, Mr. Chairman, is you heard about all these home-delivered meals. You've got to know that in a lot of cases, and Jennifer don't have those numbers, but those are the only people they see. They see that day, that's it, is the volunteers who deliver that hot meal. And as our seniors continue, that number continues to grow, and what they do at the senior center, even what they had to do during COVID, it's pretty amazing. So if you want to take them, you want me to read the resolution or just make a motion to accept?
I think just make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution, recognition of Macon County Crawford senior volunteers for the period beginning April the 18th, the week of 18th through the 24th, 2021.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bill. Second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
Jennifer, we're also, I know it's, for the time, it's not much, but hopefully, it will mean something to them. We're planning on putting all your volunteers on one of our commissioner pens.
I know Pam had mentioned that, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9B, update and request regarding Women's History Trail project and hire. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. This wasn't planned, but as one of the board members for the Department of Social Services, did she leave? Jennifer already got?
Yeah.
I would like to add my compliments to what they do and to the work that Jennifer does. Very honored to be able to follow that presentation. I'm here as the Chair of the Folk Heritage Association of Macon County, which has primarily been known for the past 15 years for the Folk Festival. We did not hold that festival this past year, obviously, but another project that we are known for now is our Women's History Trail. Mary Palansky came in November, and we made a request for a donation to match what the town had given, and that request was for $15,000. And that is for the sculpture, which is a part of this Women's History Trail. Let me back up a minute. The Women's History Trail is the first such trail in the state of North Carolina, and we now have many stops on that trail that are marked with flags. We've received donations to be able to purchase those flags and mark these locations that have a story to tell about women in this area. The next phase of this project is the sculpture. This is a brief summary. I don't know if I brought enough copies of that sculpture project, which is entitled Sowing the Seeds of the Future. And we are fortunate to have a, the gentleman doing the work for us is in Cashers, although he has gained international recognition. He just had a commission job for Harriet Tubman, and that is now being moved around in areas of the country. I think it's in Halifax, North Carolina, right now. But he not only is doing our work, but he has become a friend, and he's passionate about this work. I believe in your packet, you have the requests that we brought in November for the 15,000. And I'm revisiting that, but let me just add a brief story that a few years ago, a friend of mine asked me to go to lunch. Her name's Barbara McCray, and she said she was reading a book and wanted to consider having a women's trail in this area. Obviously, that has come to pass, and her next passion is for the sculpture. And we would love to see that happen, and we have great faith. We do have some other opportunities, we hope, for some additional funding, but we have a payment due right now, and we're short about 19,000. But I would just like to ask if you all would please revisit that. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the $19,000 that's due, this contribution to be made in the memory of Barbara McCray. I think it's very fitting to recognize Barbara in this and other ways for the hours, and not only her, but and to, and all these folks who put in so much time, but Barbara McCray would be the spur here, and as you know. So I would make a motion that we take the $19,000 out of contingency to make their payment whole in memory of Barbara McCray.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bill. Second by Commissioner Shields.
Discussion. Discussion.
I missed it. What kind of sculpture is this? Is it?
It's a seven-foot bronze sculpture. Did the sheet yet to you yet, the summary sheet?
Yes, ma'am.
There's, basically, it tells a story of three women. One, that's an African-American slave named Sally, we don't know the last name. There's a Native American, and there's a pioneer woman. And their roots go to this area. Our goal is to place it somewhere near the mound. There's just a brief synopsis in that about the stories, but I'll be glad to give you the long story. And we're fortunate that our historian, Barbara, did all the research and the history of these three women and the story they tell. And they're all intertwined. The reason that they were selected is because in their lives, they also were connected. And then the way the sculpture is designed is where you would, everything from how the women's hands touch, to where the footsteps add into the future, to the apple basket, which ties in with the apple tree that we just heard about, there's symbolism in the entire sculpture.
Josh and Amy, I'm in here. I think this is our, we've taken two presentations prior to tonight's meeting that had, that went into pretty significant detail of, including, it seems like we had a small statue here of an example at one of our meetings.
We did.
The original, it's called a maquette, which is a small model. What is being completed right now is a third-scale model that will be bronzed and be able to be shown, but of course, the seven-foot outdoor is what our goal is. And I'll be glad to give you lots more information.
Yeah, there's, now, this is a 501(c)(3).
The Folk Heritage Association is a 501(c)(3), yes.
And that's a quandary. Did you apply to the community funding pool, you know?
No.
Because we just upped that, didn't we up that $35,000?
Yes.
Has that been allocated? Because here's a quandary. This is a check, a nonprofit, and we have a nonprofit community funding pool that nonprofits go through for funding. And the reason that community funding pool was set up was to avoid commissioners having to deal with every request through a nonprofit. So it's either one or the other, looks to me like, isn't it? I mean, would it be appropriate to take some of that money that we've allocated to the community funding pool and fund this?
The process set up in the community funding pool, they have their own bylaws and guidelines by which requests are submitted, and I don't know how far along they are in that process. We upped it by 37.5 mid-year, and I think they're, we have allocated that money to them, and so now they're evaluating all the requests that they have submitted, and I think they've submitted, they have received amounts that total over the 37.5 that we put back in there. So as far as taking that money from the community funding pool, Paul, I think that we should leave that there, because there could be organizations that, you know, that went through the process and submitted the allocation or submitted their request, and that's why that funding is there. But that's what, as you mentioned, that's what that community funding pool...
But there is a little difference here. The community funding pool, with their bylaws, and it's very important, and Paul's right about community funding pool, the difference, which is a small difference, you are a 501(c)(3), but you would not have received this funding through the community funding pool, because they're more geared to direct organizations like Reach, organizations that affect individuals. That's their priority in their bylaws. So I think this project, had you even applied, would not, I don't know that, but I think that it would probably not have made the criteria, especially this year of all years. But I do support this project, just knowing that, you know, we were there going to kick this off that day, and so it's a powerful, it's a powerful reminder and a powerful point of our history. So I think this one-time gift of the county of 19,000 is well worth it, and it might be outside the boundaries of the community funding pool, and I agree with Paul, but I do think in this particular interest that we should make that investment.
Now, the town of Franklin, they abandoned their community funding pool two years ago, and I think they donated or made a donation of 15,000.
15,000, yeah. And then we've generated from private donations so far. We've written some grants. We've received some. We have been turned down with some. The bank just gave us a nice donation from our citizens.
Now, I'm not questioning the worthiness of this. You know, it's just a process. Either we have a community funding pool, or we abandon that and fund private individual requests. That's the quandary. But that's my simple opinion.
I agree. I understand Paul's comments 100%. Agree with that, but also, I can't help but sit here and see Barbara sitting out there smiling at us as she always did, and I just think it's a, considering, I just think it's a, it's a very nice tribute to her, but I completely agree with Paul at the same time.
We are on the, we're getting correspondence nationally with not only the women's trail, but with this project. You probably heard in the last year, there are very few sculptures that focus on women, and the first one was just put in Central Park in New York, that focused on the sovereignets, the suffragettes. That's the only women's sculpture. So the fact that we are thinking of this, that we're getting a lot of people interested in coming and seeing it for one thing, when it's finished.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Put the record reflect 4 to 1 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Contingency.
All right. Moving on to Old Business. Grant permission for Skyrunner to place wireless internet equipment at Macon County Courthouse in order to provide LBJ Job Corps with broadband internet service. Mr. Jenkins, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was the commission. As y'all know very well, the LBJ Job Corps, for several years, struggled with internet connectivity, practically having none, which is a major problem for them with teaching their courses. They were also paying an exorbitant amount for very little service. So the last couple of years, three years ago, I believe, Mr. Shields and Gethel, I guess you could call them a broadband consultant, began working on a deal that involved the Department of Labor, who actually supervises the Job Corps, or oversees the Job Corps from the federal government. And Skyrunner Internet, which is an internet provider out of Asheville, finally got permission from the Department of Labor to negotiate with Skyrunner. First phase of the project was, of course, to identify how do we get broadband to the Job Corps. The first go-around was, there was a proposal to shoot it from the emergency services building to Ryan Spring Ball down to the Job Corps. Well, that did not work, because you couldn't get a direct shot from Ryan Spring's Ball to the Job Corps. Second solution was to shoot it to a, I found this pretty humorous, the bathrooms at Wyere Ball that would have radio, they would place the radio equipment on, and then shoot directly to the Job Corps. They had a sideline, but of course, you know, the fire service was not going to go for that. So after some diligent work on the behalf of Skyrunner and also several other individuals, the solution has been worked out, shoot, to do a backhaul into the courthouse, place minimal radio equipment on the fifth floor of the courthouse, shoot two relays to private property out on adjacent, pretty close to Georgia Road, then shoot another relay to a private property on Wyere Road, then a direct shot to the Job Corps. This will enable the Job Corps to have up to one gig of broadband service. Good thing is, it didn't cost the county anything, except a little space to put the radio equipment on the fifth floor. So to move that along, excuse me, we need a letter, I guess, granting permission to place that radio equipment to Skyrunner. And so that's why I'm here tonight. And I'd just like to mention also, this whole project wouldn't have been possible if Mr. Shields hadn't burned down at East State on top of this for, I guess, the last three years.
If I could, people are around, if they could look at it, you know, one of them.
Well, so this is a worthy project. As you know, Job Corps is an institution in Macon County, and is a great asset to our community. This is no cost, just a little space. And another possibility out of this is that Skyrunner will be able to look into some internet, provide an internet within the community too.
Go ahead. No, if you're, go.
No, I'll do a glass, but it needs a motion, so go ahead.
Oh, I, no, you're the broadband guy. I've just had a question. We'll wait till after the motion. Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue with this project and allow the tower to be placed on the courthouse as needed.
Right, yeah. It would not be a tower, it would just be some, I guess that'd be the crystal.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Shields. Second by Commissioner Young. Discussion.
Between here and the Job Corps, with this, is it, can you enhance existing broadband service for anybody between those two points?
Yeah, Skyrunner actually has a two-phase project on this. Number one, of course, is to hook up the Job Corps, because that was their original contract with VOL. Number two, that enables them to look at providing community broadband, wireless broadband. And their site on the Georgia Road in particularly, which is on Beacon Mountain Trail, which is actually off Wide Horizon, but it's on that ridge between the Georgia Road and...
Vanderwoods.
Yeah, up there, up in there. That will hit a whole lot of people. Plus, if you shoot that other direct relay to Wyere, Wyere Road, which is on Timber Creek, Timber Creek subdivision, up towards the top of that, that'll also have some opportunity there. So there's a win-win situation. Job Corps gets what they need, the community gets, you know, the details have to work out, the possibility of increased, expanded broadband to the community.
You got a time thing, Tom? We know that.
They are supposed to have... They are supposed to have, they have a firm operational commitment for the BICO April 15. So, I assume, they've already tested, they've already shot the sites and everything. So, they're on fast track after three years.
One thing you have to remember about the Job Corps, to us when we started working with this, they're an educational center. And the reception, things they were receiving at that center was about nil. And a long time before the students would come in, they had more access to broadband service than we could provide for them. And it was hard for the teachers, too, and the students, to go through the process of the learning with a computer. And so, this allows them to, allows LBJ to move into the 21st century. And those young people that are there, they've been in the 21st century at home. But it allowed them to now to be a part of this movement.
And they've been gone. They just came back.
Here, yeah.
Two weeks ago. Started trickling. They didn't fill it up. They're just bringing in a few at a time, so.
I have a question and a comment, or a suggestion. Suggestion, would it be wise of us to have Warren and maybe Andy look into it, just to make sure that they've already done that?
They already have. I should have mentioned that.
Good, okay. Question, are we opening up a precedent to, and maybe it's a good precedent. We can finally get some broadband. Are we opening up a precedent to just allow people to put towers on?
Well, first of all, it's not a tower.
Well, never, it might be.
DMed already has a bit of a presence up on the building, also. That precedent has already been set.
Good enough. Let's take them home there.
We can. That's what I say, maybe it's a good precedent. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. One other thing about the Boston West Agreement, that just has some tweaks we need to do, and it'll hopefully be on the agenda in April. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me do it. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Moving on to new business request from Calwee School Arts and Heritage Center. Mr. Gaffey, welcome.
Mr. Gaffey.
You got your mask on.
Come on up, Bobby. Bobby.
What, maybe you'll go first, and I'll, I'll back him up.
I appreciate y'all considering the request. We had a couple from the community down in Calwee who have put up a $10,000 match. And if we can raise another $10,000 to an allocation from the county, we can repair the basketball court down at the school. Part of our commitment years ago, in 2010, I think, when we started talking about this process, was to keep the recreation field and facilities open down at Calwee School, because it's always been a center for the community. And it's really the only public recreation facility in that part of the county. And this last year, we've seen a record number of people using the playground, the open field, the ball field, and the walking track, and a record number of kids trying to use the basketball court. They parked some of the mobile units back when the school was still open on that basketball court, and there's some nice-sized craters and holes down there. Went down and talked to a kid a couple of months ago who was playing down there, and I apologized to him. You know, they'll try to dribble, and if they hit one of the craters, it's out in the field. And he told me, he said, "Well, that's no problem. If I can play down here, I can play anywhere." But that's been a goal of ours for some time, and this couple, in their generositys, agreed to match $10,000. And our preliminary estimates would be a cost between $15,000 and $18,000 to redo the court. And with the remaining funds, we'd need to install some sort of barrier to keep traffic off of the court, as it's adjacent to our lower parking lot.
Good. Thank you. I think anytime we can get a 50% on our money, that's a good investment for the county.
Have you got a schedule when you want to do it, Stacy?
I'd like to start getting bids on it as soon as we get the money in hand. I'd really like to have it done by some.
You plan on repaving the whole, what are you planning on doing there?
Just repairing it, or? To sort of repair it and then cover it. Ideally, depending on the material cost, you know, we could do asphalt, or we could do a composite like they have down here at the town. Ideally, that's what we'd rather do, is the composite material, because it tends to last a whole lot longer and weather better.
Good, good. Motion question.
I certainly will make a motion that we matched the very generous contribution to provide recreation on that end of the county, because that, you're right, that's all they are, and it is well-used. So, I think that's a good investment, Mr. Chairman, and recommend that it also be taken out of contingency.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bill.
I do have a question.
Sure.
How can we, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. We've got a second. Commissioner Shields, questions.
I mean, how can we actively, you know, bring in more youth? I think so many people drive by that school, and they don't even know, I mean, people who have just moved in here, they don't really know the historical, you know, purposes behind the school, nor the less do they realize they can pull over and use it. Like, I'm okay to spend the money, but I don't want it to sit there and rot. I want people, I want to drive by, I hate to say this, but in the past 10 years, I don't think I've ever seen anybody playing out there. It's probably because the field's so bad. But I want to find a way that if we spend the money, that, you know, like, I want to see kids playing on the court. I want to see kids playing outside and playing in the dirt, like we used to do. You know what I mean? Get them off these tablets. But I just want to find a way to let people know that, hey, come on, come play. This is a park. You know, I want to make sure if we spend the money that, you know, that we can draw more youth.
Sure, sure. I'm just thinking, Josh, what's going on with your thought there? And I don't disagree with you at all. I think they've got a pretty tremendous outreach, that they would be happy to blast it out if they're getting ready to renovate.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the nice things about the recreation out front, too, is that we don't, you know how organizations work in Macon County, a lot of them, you have older volunteers and older users, and it's no different out at the school. But what's good for us is having those recreation facilities. That's why it draws families down to the school. So, we work really hard to maintain the facilities inside and out on the field. But that court's been an issue now for a few years.
Thank you. Question.
I know y'all have taken hits, Stacy, during the COVID thing, as have so many other DNUs and businesses. Now, you are a 501(c)(3).
We are.
And we, last year's allocation or funding to the center was what, $300,000?
It was, I think we ended up around $38,000, $40,000.
Is there a deadline? And you know where I'm going with this. It's the same thing with Ann. You know, I'm trying not to root by emotion, but what's the deadline on the matching funds?
They're ready to send the check.
Did they say, hey, you got to do this? I mean, we've got a budget. We're entering a budget cycle. We got, what, April, May, June? We've got three months to wrap up the budget. So, my opinion is, let's work this through the budget with your other, match with your other funding. So, that's, I think it's a great idea. I played basketball when I was, you know, as a kid. I just said, child deprived of any opportunity, but there's a process for funding.
And the difference is, we own the property. Macon County owns that.
Yeah. And I'd say our timing right now is just to try to have that done by the summertime.
I oppose that idea. It's just a matter of the funding process.
But we own that property. That's the difference. And we wouldn't qualify for the funding pool.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I think, you want to speak? Do you want to speak, Ted? Come on.
I'm letting him ask for the money. Good evening. It's been a while since I've been here, but I'm glad to be back. Mr. Young, I don't believe you were on the board last time I was here. Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome to the board here. I want to acknowledge the assistance that y'all have given us at the school. And we're, what, eight years old now? And we've been a 501(c)(3) five and a half of those years, I believe. And all of the success that we have had down there has been made possible by the continued support of the county. And this is fortuitous, the conversation earlier about funding, Paul, and your question there. Your continued support is important to all nonprofits, and here's why. From time, well, every year, probably, you'll see a request from the school, or from the NACOSI Initiative, I'll get to that in a minute, for a baseline amount of money that may not be earbarked for anything in particular. And the reason for that is, and it's worked for us at the school, it shows a continuity of support and confidence in what that organization is doing. And we have taken that amount of money that y'all have put into that school and turned around, and that has enabled us to get thousands and thousands of dollars in grant money, because they understand that we're not going to fold up and go away tomorrow, that money that they give us is going to be put to good use in our programs down there. So, that's why you will see some of those funding requests. And it does need to come directly from the governmental body to show that, that level of support, and gives us credibility over time. Every year, a few more doors are opened, a few more opportunities are available to us because of that continuity. And so, that partnership with the county has led us to partnerships with state, federal, and private funders, and that money that you give is leveraged over and over. So, I come here tonight mainly to do a goodbye and a hello in the same thing. Last week, we lost a person, very, very important in our community. Barbara McCray served as co-chair of the NACOSI Initiative, along with Juanita Wilson, that represents the Eastern Band of Cherokee. I also serve on that board, as well as chairing the board down at the school. And the other board members have elected me to attempt to fill the vacancy left on the NACOSI Initiative with the passing of Barbara. And I think it's only right that I step down from the chairmanship on the school board, and I'll do that at the next regular board meeting down there. So, you may hear from me on behalf of the school again, or the new chair, or Mr. Gaffey, and you will probably see me in here with Ms. Isabron in the future, discussing NACOSI Initiative. We have some great things coming up right around the corner with NACOSI Initiative and with the school, and I look forward to being involved and working with this commission on those projects. Thank you, gentlemen.
Boy, what a testament we've had to volunteerism in Macon County tonight. So, thank you for your efforts, Paul. All right. Sutton Broadcasting Lease Agreement Amendment. Sean Gibson.
As Mr. Gibson's coming up, Mr. Chairman, I'll just give the board a brief kind of rundown here. If you'll recall, back in July of 2015, we approved a sublease agreement with Sutton Broadcasting at the Calwee Ball Tower side. Sutton Broadcasting is now requesting to amend that agreement to add a second sublease, which Sean is here and can talk about. This has been approved by the FCC, the United States Forest Service. It will require no change or addition of equipment. It will not impact our emergency management. I checked with Warren. Everything's good there. They're not putting anything else up there, not adding anything. And Macon County's current lease at this time is set to expire with the Forest Service on 12/31/21. And we have submitted, at this time, the paperwork to the Forest Service for a lease extension. So, with that being said, Sean, if you'll come up, the amendment has been included in your agenda packet. This was reviewed, formerly, we had these discussions with our former legal counsel, Mr. Chester Jones, and he advised to, in order for this amendment to be able to take place, we needed to get clearance from the FCC, the United States Forest Service, and both those items have been received. And this will actually increase the annual amount we receive in rent off this site, as we'll now be adding an additional sublease. So, Sean, with that being said, appreciate you coming here tonight, and just kind of, you can fill in the gaps if you want to, and answer any questions.
The county manager, they've been paying their rent?
Yes, sir.
What, how long does this currently last, this current?
It will be.
Is it indefinite?
No, it will, our lease will, it'll have to be renewed on December 31/21, because that's when the parent lease will expire with the Forest Service.
So, their lease will?
Yes, we'll have to renegotiate everything.
Theirs at that time?
Our lease, yes.
So, we're not negotiating terms or anything else at this point?
Right.
Just the amendment.
We get more money.
Yeah, basically, thank you, gentlemen. It's been a while. It's been, what, six years, I guess? This microphone's a little smaller than the one I use for telling and selling. But anyway, well, yeah, basically, what's happening, Mr. Chairman, is the county, and this would be, this amendment would be non-retroactive. You would be getting, right now, I think we're paying $500 a month for the three channels, leased the top part of that tower. As county manager Derek said, nothing changes physically up there. Basically, we would be adding Blue Ridge Broadcasting, which is a subsidiary of Billy Graham out of Charlotte, they would be paying the county directly an additional $250. So, we're paying $500, they're paying another $250 directed to the county, non-retroactive. So, you're really, you've got three channels right now, $500 a month. There would be three channels and $750 per month for the county.
All right. Sean, I've got a question for you.
Yep.
Who were broadcasting? What games? What schools were broadcasting this year?
Well, I personally am calling the Franklin games on WFSE, and then 1041 is handling some of the Cherokee games.
Okay. It's, I'm the commissioner, I'm the chairman here, and I live in Highlands. So, I can tell you, it frustrates me, because I can only get 1041, and when I look on the radio, I'm listening to Cherokee football. I understand it's a business, but we're the ones that control that. So, I would love to hear our Panther football on the local channels. But I think we had a discussion about this when we first approved this lease. I was just looking, I guess it was 15?
15.
I remember it well, because that was a question that came up about the opportunity that it provides to y'all of opening up y'all's business tremendously into that part of the western North Carolina. But we'll discuss this as we get into the end of the year and renegotiate those terms.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't have any problem with this, just a Panthers fan.
Well, hopefully, we'll do better this week. So, it was a rough night, Friday night, gentlemen. A rough night. Too many backs they had.
I understand.
Got to stop the run. So, anybody have any other questions?
Motion to approve the request as granted to enhance the payment from 500 to 750.
Yeah. A motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Good seeing you all. Nice to meet you, Josh. I think we may have met one time before.
Nice to meet you.
I recognize your voice, yeah. Yeah, it's me every day.
Thank you, Sean.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
All right. Planning permitting and development. Director Jack Morgan. Number one, installation of well and upgrade to water feature at Wesley's Park.
Jack, some of those people stay just to hear you now.
I hope they're not disappointed.
He gives you guys a beat after your conversation.
Jack, water feature.
Sorry, I didn't get you beforehand. I had a little trouble retrieving some of the material. There'll be something Jack can do.
That's right. That's right.
That is everybody.
I'm not the clerk. I got to. I hope all of y'all are familiar with the water feature at Wesley's Park. It's very nice, very nice thing for the kids to go down there and cool off in the summertime. And it don't cost them anything, so it helps a lot of parents homeschooling, stuck at home to have a place to go. But what we have there with the water feature, we have a town water supply. We have seven heads that are controlled by solenoids that randomly, you can control how the randomness of the water squirts up at different places, like that, for the kids to play in. We usually turn them on in May and off in September. Of course, to put it on the outside temperature, time to turn it off. And we do have two water surfaces there, two meters. We have one that goes to the pavilion and picnic shelter, and one that goes to the water feature. That way, we don't have to pay sewer, of course, for the water usage. Our maintenance director, Mike Cope, brought to my attention the water bills of the feature, which are on the first page of your handout there.
Unbelievable.
So, yeah, that's why we're here. So, yeah, that's why we're here. For those months, $28,218.49 of water is what we bought. I would like to propose that we consider furnishing our own water. Mr. Cope met with me and Kyle Jennings of the Health Department about a permit, not an issue, there's a copy of that in your packet, we can get a well permit for that. And we can, we can do this and that location may have our own well and supply. But also, of course, it wasn't open last year due to COVID, but at the end of 19, the solenoids were bad, they would need to be replaced. Seth Adams got a quote on that and it's included in there too, $6,066, I think's the amount. But that's got to be done anyway. But what do we need to do to be able to disconnect from the town's water supply? Need to drill a well, we have the permit. Once we determine the yield, we can design an adequate supply system for the feature. We've got to know how much water we're going to get before we can design that because if all those heads, water's running continuously, which they don't, but they put out a lot of water, they would use 81 gallons a minute. So we've got to treat that water with a ultraviolet light system before it goes on the kids. We've got to have, if we don't have enough yield, we've got to put some sort of reservoir in, so this all costs money. But what I would propose is that we do that and the approximate cost for that would be, if we had a 300-foot well, it'd run about $6,815 considering 300-foot. If it's less, it would be less, if it's more, it would be more. The engineering services to design the system would be $4,200. And the estimate for the equipment would be $35,000, which is $6,000 that we're going to spend anyway to make this thing work. So estimating the project costs are approximately $56,000 and that would put us out of buying water, this water feature. We can pay for it in what, three years? Something like that.
My, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Has anybody approached the town about helping us with this?
I think Mr. Cope talked to them about that. Have you talked to them, Derek?
Yeah.
Since I read this agenda, besides the radio tower and the football games, that was one of my soapboxes, this one, it absolutely irks me to no extent that the town of Franklin, here's a park in the middle of their town and they're charging us full price on water for the public good. It blows my mind, so I'm 100% in favor of doing this well and moving on.
Have we talked to any yet about this, about this particular, not this particular, but like on the, I mean, have you had any conversations with them?
Yeah, they've not given me much to go on. Well, for instance, with the Greenway project, I had to pay a $51 permit fee for the town to make the connector, so they're not giving me a break, maybe somebody else, but not me.
I understand there's some auditing there that needs to happen so they keep up with it, which they can still do, but we don't necessarily have to pay that, so.
But anyway, I can't do anything.
You can't make it up.
Without your permission to do this, your authorization.
We still have time, but is there a way to go to public session and just bring this up to the town and just, you know, I mean, I don't want to, if there's a way they're willing to work with us.
I'm sure that'd be the way to do it.
Am I wrong? I don't know, I'm just asking.
I'll be happy to call down there and see if they.
You need to go down, go see them.
I feel like if they saw that, I mean, it's their tax dollars, surely they'd, you know, pump the flat rate or something like that.
Just like Jim said, it's right in the middle of town.
But I agree, I mean, if not, we need to do our own water.
The only thing about doing our own water source, that's the baby you have to keep, take care of for the long term.
Would it be wise to, also ask Derek to do that and if he's unsuccessful, go ahead and give you all the approval before, does that work?
If it's unsuccessful, let's do it.
I'd like to see what they say.
We're going to have a resolution exempting the engineering services.
So why don't, we'll do that, report back in April. At that time, if discussions with the town.
Do you have a schedule of the next town board meeting? Maybe we should show up?
Yeah.
When is that?
First Monday.
When they meet.
First Monday. First Monday of the month? So, meaning you'll be there, Derek? Yes, we will.
Y'all tell me.
Yeah, we'll just go. That's the easiest way.
If, if you decide to go that way, we're ready to go.
Good.
Thank you for your work. I had no idea. Did you, Jim?
Yeah, well, I didn't know that, but I have some past knowledge, knew that they were charging us for that. But the ones that aggregate me and Derek and I discussed this earlier today was some of the tower, we're still paying some of the lift stations, they're collecting revenues, so, exactly.
You say River Bean?
Derek, Derek, he's on top of it. He is on top of it.
So we've got, we've got a report, everybody.
Okay.
What was the direction again to wait to hear for this meeting?
We'll take it up. Item two, water construction bid regarding Greenway Connector.
Yes. Actually, we don't need to formally do that, but what I need to talk to you about is the cost. When we sat down with Brian Bertsch and Andy Russell of the DOT and we went over what they would expect us to do for that Greenway Connector, we estimated the cost of $70,000 and y'all approved that, of which the state DOT is going to pay $49,000 of. But the actual cost came in more than that by some $12,402 above that. We have $6,000 in engineering fees, $2,500 in survey fees, $51.25 for town permit and the low bid for the construction itself was $73,850 by Finland Contracting. So the state, it will stop at $49,000. They say anything about $70,000 is ours and the total tab's going to be $82,402. And I hate to ask for more money to pay for this, but we've come this far and we've about got it.
And that doesn't surprise me, it's been a while we've been working on this, the prices have gone up, so.
Yeah, COVID slowed us down tremendously getting design, getting approvals, it's been over a year working on this, just the approval.
Ready to see it done.
But anyway, this will take it from the pavement there at Wesley's Park, under both bridges, up through the Frog's parking lot until the end of the town bridge.
So we need action to approve this, do we need a motion to approve?
Don't need a motion, just need a motion to approve a budget amount for $12,402 from contingency or combined balance. Your contingency is sitting at, it's sitting at $46,000 right now after the two.
The contingency still at 46?
After the two, the 29,000 you've already taken flight if we were at 75.
We've got three months to go.
It'll be fine to take it.
Do we get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Shields.
Well, I want to do a contingency.
Second, my Commissioner Bill, any questions, comments?
I miss this part, too.
This one's been, this one's been working for some time.
To put this much money into it.
Yeah, it's been about three years total.
All in favor, send a public saying aye.
Did they give, since Brian's now the head, head, head on that door?
He is.
Maybe we can get it moved up on the schedule?
We're ready.
But they, maybe they can get it moved up.
We're doing the work.
I know we're going to do the work, but they got to be involved with the money, with the check.
Yeah, but they've, they've had the money, we signed that agreement last.
It's a reimbursement basis, we have to spend the money.
You have to spend it and then get it back.
Then get rid of ours, yeah.
That's what we have to do.
Oh, it's cool.
That's the, that was the plan. But we'll start as soon as we get a contract with Finland.
Any questions from the Frog's people back there? You're dealing with it all.
I have one, are there actual plans for this, what it looks like?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have them in your office?
I do.
Okay, I might stop by and see you then.
How about I just ring you, set five for you?
That would be perfect, we'd love that.
Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson.
Thank you, Jack.
Chris, sorry, does anybody need a breather, who want to keep trucking? Anybody give?
I've got to go just for a second. We'll take that. Three minutes, three minutes.
Anybody else? Take it, take off, we'll get started, you're fine. All right, Chris, solid waste, resolution exempting engineering services for Carson Center project and approval of proposal from McGill Associates. Welcome, hey, good job at Scaly, by the way, it's laps.
Oh, good.
The center looks really good, I just want to make sure, I know we've talked about it before, but just a public reminder, we need to use that money that their community organization gave to us for a little bit of landscaping and no, I can't do it. But I'll help you pick shrubs and place them.
Yeah, and I apologize, we ran into some, of course, the Nantahala Center was sort of finishing up as we were, well, was kicking off and anyway, we ran into some issues in Nantahala and so I haven't gotten back to Scaly, but you will be getting a call from me and yes, we do intend to do some.
We've had a lot of compliments, Chris, we really have, so thank you for that.
Good, good. And we've heard good things about the centers. I wish, I'm not sure how long it's going to take us to train our staff, if you push a stop button and hit start again without pulling that button back out. And then we make a trip to Scaly and or Nantahala to pull that button out, it's not that efficient, but otherwise, great. Now, last, last Wednesday, I had to go to Nantahala and pull the button out and today Sean had to go to Scaly to pull the button.
Scaly's up.
But we're working on it.
Yeah, don't call me for that.
Okay, so I think if I read the agenda correctly, we're talking about the.
Carson's.
Carson.
Yeah. Carson Center and the McGill.
Okay, so I've got, I've got to screw up on the header of this one, but this is the McGill one. So attached in your agenda, you will see just a proposed general services agreement with McGill Associates for various, a few various tasks, but the main one involving development of a new center at the old Carter J School property to replace the Carson Center. The, basically, what this amounts to is sort of the due diligence, since we were gifted this property, instead of buying it, we didn't really do the due diligence. So I've asked McGill for a proposal just to help us with DOT ingress and egress issues, try to avoid any more water and sewer issues. We are trying to provide bathroom facilities and running water at the centers for our tenants and hopefully avoid, I mean, well, deal with any floodway issues and hopefully avoid any shippo or tipho issues. And so that's, that's the crux of what I've asked them for in this service agreement. There's a couple other items in there, some GPS work and some stormwater updates, that's basically, that's a couple hours here and there, just stuff that doesn't really warrant a, you know, $500 or $800 contract, so just kind of put that in this general services agreement to get it, to get it all covered. What I'm asking for tonight is the board to approve the attached resolution exempting this project from the provisions of Article 3D, which is subchapter 143 of General Statutes, and authorize Derek to execute the contract with McGill Associates so that we can begin the due diligence process at Carson Center, future Carson Center. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
We'll prop this Carson Center out.
We do.
And the plans for that?
Don't have any present.
Not worth, I mean.
It's, it's, it's pretty small footprint. There's not, I mean, it's surrounded by, frankly, it's wetlands that have been modified. I don't want to say too much. We didn't do it, so.
Motion to approve your request.
A motion by Commissioner Higdon. Second, my Commissioner Shields, comments? Just looking at the P schedule, they charge almost as much as the tree services.
Not hard.
All in favor, send a public saying aye. All right, resolution exempting geotechnical services for recycling processing center and approval of proposal from Bunell Lammons Engineering.
Yes. There's a little awful sketch attached in the contract. Once again, gentlemen, I'm asking for a resolution to exempt going through the normal RFQ procedures. If you will remember, we, we have discussed for a couple years replacing the back portion of this building, which is both, well, the big thing is, we want to turn, we want to orient the building with a new section, have full span clearance so that we don't have equipment and trucks hitting the support beams, which what kind of got us into this mess to start with. So we have, we have better secured the damage posts, so we're not, the building's not continuing to sink, it's stable, but we, we still do want to do this, make these improvements to the building. And also expand the roof coverage over the back part of the dock that's there now, it would give us three more, three more spots to park and stage trailers for moving commodities in and out, out of the weather. We have to store a lot of commodities out right now and I don't know if you know of it, we're not supposed to look like a landfill, so having this stuff stashed everywhere is not the best. But as we, as I was contemplating getting into this project, it occurred to me, some of you may know, that, that original strut, well, that entire structure was built on two old hog lagoons that were backfilled with casting from the microplane. So what I don't want to do is get into a project where we think we're going to put up a couple hundred thousand dollar building and wind up needing four or $500,000 worth of earthwork to put a foundation under that building. And so ask BLE for this proposal to do some borings, to give us the information about what's underneath that building, what it can support, or what we might have to do as far as sizing of footers or, in essence, if it makes the project just cost prohibitive, you know, do we need to, do we need to look at perhaps moving this building somewhere else instead of expanding it on where it sits now? And so that proposal is enclosed and we'd be looking again for a resolution exempting and county manager authorization to approve this contract.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Higdon. Second, my Commissioner Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It was easy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Good to see you, Paul, good to see you.
Item 11E, lease of Macon Middle School with Macon County Board of Education. Where is this you?
Yes, sir. So, you know, as part of the Macon Middle School renovations, the school board has had to, will deed the property to the county, but of course, they need to still have continued use of the school, so this is just a formality to lease the school back to the Board of Education. The Board of Education approved it at their February meeting, so we just need county commissioners to approve the lease as well.
Motion to approve the lease, Mr. Chairman.
The motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Item E1, authorize county manager to enter a, enter a contract with new Atlantic Construction. Just need a motion on this, Mr. Manager?
Motion, second, yes.
Motion to authorize the county manager to proceed with the contract.
Motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Item 11G, or 11F has been removed, 11G, lease agreements with Southwestern Community College regarding former National Guard armory facility and adjoining property. Mr. Olin?
Yes, and glad to have Dr. Thomas and Mr. Brothers here with us tonight from FCC. The leases that are included in your agenda packet, we have since negotiated, the ones that I actually have passed out in hard copy, the leases that we'll be discussing here tonight and just. here tonight, and just briefly, we started out, and we'd like to thank Dr. Thomas and Mr. Shatley, Dean Shatley, their attorney, they worked diligently with Ms. Carpenter and myself to come and get this deal done. And I know we're anxious to see as SEC is this project move forward. Just some high points. One of the things that we did, we separated, as you'll see there on that survey that is attached, separated the tracks into two portions, Track A and Track B. Track A is the property that the armory is located on, and Track B is the property, the back parking lot behind it. And the reason that we decided to do this was because Track B is what's going to, is what's going to deal with the burn building itself. The burn building will be placed on Track B, and as such, that is the track that the bond money is going to deal with. So, our responsibility and the county's responsibility as far as satisfying the NC Connect Bond match will all pertain to Track B, whereas the lease agreement for the armory and the renovations that are going to take place at the armory is something that is directly between us and SEC. So, in separating this, we'll be able to keep that bond-funded project and what's going on there separate and apart from the negotiations, the renovations that are taking place at the armory. One of the major things here is, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This lease has nothing to do with the burn building?
The, this lease does. Your, the first one, says here, the one where...
I don't see no prices.
Well, they're, the burn building, that is one of the things that this lease is going to do. This lease gives the, for Track B, which is where the burn building will be placed, again, Track B is the track that the bond money pertains to. This gives Dr. Thomas what he needs to go to the state office and hand down the lease and get the project started with the burn building. And at that time...
What was that, Paul?
The 3-1.
3-1.
At that time, we will be able to, when he gets to go to the state and get his architect started, they'll be able to bring us a revised 3-1, which is contemplated in this lease for Track B, which will allow us to establish a firm project cost and know what the county's contribution as far as the match required on the burn building's going to be. So, with the approval of that lease for Track B, that's going to happen. With Track A, Track A, we have discussed renovations. Jack had brought a list before the board, Dr. Thomas was up here, we discussed those as well as renovations identified by SEC during that process. That lease is going to be, again, between us and SEC and pertain to Track A, which is the renovations we're making to the armory. Again, the state, the Community College Office would not count the renovations that we were making to the armory or the lease toward the bond match. So, that's why, again, I felt it was so important to separate out the, this parcel of property, to know we have one lease that covers our responsibilities to the North Carolina Community College system, and what we're required to do under the bond to allow SEC to receive the 1.4 million in funding, and then this is between us and SEC, with no community coll, with no state office of community college in the middle. So, that makes it a cleaner process, it allows us to know our obligations to fulfill the bond requirement, which is burn building placement, and then this lease agreement on Track A will enable us to discuss and negotiate and finalize terms with SEC, separate and apart from the North Carolina Community College system. So, with that being said, one notable change I do want to make is, make known is, the board had originally established a 25-year term for the lease. We received word back from the State Office of Community College that a long-term lease for them is 40 years. So, that change, it has been made from 25 to 40 in both of these agreements that are before you tonight for Track A and Track B, simply to come into line with what the State Office of Community College, and I, am I calling that, is that the right? What they consider a long-term lease and what we're actually doing with SEC. So, that brings that all into line. And Dr. Thomas, more than happy to, if you want to add anything, or...
No, you explained it perfectly as far as our discussions and conversations with the 3-1, and then with the new communication from the state identifying that as a long-term.
And I think you'll be presenting these to your board on the 23rd?
23rd, two weeks from this evening.
You just, you good? You good with this?
We've massaged this back and forth, and I think as long as the communication for what Mr. Morgan has identified as some of the renovation aspects there, we created a list, Derek, along with Mr. Morgan and a couple other items, then as long as we can make that work, I think it would be good to go, yeah.
Should you vote on each separate?
Still takes board approval on our behalf. I can't speak for them.
But you're going, there's something you could present to them with some level of confidence?
When does that idea arise?
The attorney booth, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the lease agreement as presented.
Both lease agreements are presented?
I'm sorry, both lease agreements.
Okay, just clarifying, also. We have a motion by Commissioner Young.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Higdon. Questions, comments?
I have to comment, Mr. Chairman, I didn't know that we could, I read this, and I had never saw the mouth on it until we saw it, but I still think this is not a slam to SEC, but this is probably the worst financial move that this board has made since I've been on here. I mean, we're looking at a 2 point, we're right at $4 million the Macon County taxpayers investing. It was a gift to the Macon County taxpayers, the building was, a 2.7 right there?
The price value?
Yeah.
I think it was 2.9.
2.9, we're going to put another 1.3 in it, at least. So, we're talking, you might as well say where we're at it, for 4 million, and this was the only building we had available for any kind of economic development, so, then that's not saying that the program's not important, it's not good, but I just think it's a, it's poor management of the Macon County taxpayer dollars to invest 4 million, and that's what you're doing for 40 years, you're giving the villain away for 40 years.
Do we know?
So, but in lieu of that, you know, I certainly want to support the burn building. So, if you can't split them, I'm in. I got to vote for the burn building.
Call the question, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Well, I think Mr. Shields might have come.
Sorry.
To be part, I'm for the burn building too. Maybe I've worked on that five or six years prior to going into lease agreement. So, I'm definitely in with the burn building. I have some reservations about the National Guard Armory, but as Mr. Bill said, if these is brothers and sisters together, I'm in.
I'm in. We're about to put 10 and a half million dollars into the middle school with black mold, the 4 million dollars for the college.
22 years and serve a lot of kids. This will serve how many people, Macon County, 12% go there?
So, this will last 40 years, 45 years, and I think that's a good investment.
We don't know that. You have no clue?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good, all right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Approval of architectural services contract for proposed Macon Transit Facility expansion. Kim, you up, Ms. Angel? You want Derek to...
Kim, thank you for staying with us.
Actually, Derek, you should say, I'm glad I bothered to tell you to show up tonight.
I wasn't thinking quick enough or I'd have put you in front of Chris.
Yeah, exactly. I started to say something, but I didn't. You know, I want you to go on record that I did not say anything this time. Last month, we were here and had asked for a resolution for an exemption for the A&amp;E Services on the facility expansion. On February 25th, I received an email from NC DOT that said this request for exemption was grandfathered in and meets the requirements under the North Carolina General Statutes. You are free to move forward under that exemption. As of today, we received a formal letter from NC DOT congratulating us on the project, even though it goes back to fiscal year 2019, and that we do have pre-award authority, so we can go ahead and incur costs, and they should be covered, should be covered under the grant at that point in time. But, in addition, the email that I got said that we would be meeting with NC DOT to further discuss the A&amp;E Services, which, I'm a little different. The other projects are all new builds, and mine is a facility expansion. So, I think what we need to do, I believe, in your package was a contract from Mr. Ritter, which he, which do qualify under that exemption. I don't know, I printed that.
Is this being there, I'm not seeing it.
It's in.
It's in, there we go.
How did you see it?
Hang on.
It's 19... 19...
There's three pages.
It's on the third page, Rory, under compensation for basic services. There's only three pages in here, and there's no compensation section.
That's pretty important.
Yeah.
You got your, you got your last page?
Well, it's on, it's actually on, I don't know what page you don't have, what page is not in it. Compensation for basic services?
It's $19,000.
Mine goes, I've got a page...
Yeah, we, there's a page got left out.
There's a missing page, yeah.
And I mean, I...
I've got cover page, and I go to miscellaneous, and then it jumps to the end.
You want to see it?
I just wanted to make sure it was in there.
I happened to print it out, so it is for $19,000.
Yeah, this page is not in our package.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That makes good sense.
I didn't do that. And of course, Mr. Morgan will be helping guide through this project, because of course, once we do this, part of the caveat is, there's 80% federal money, there's 20% local money, which is already in the current budget that we have right now. But obviously, we have to follow the federal, federal public transportation law described in FTA Third Party Contracting Guidance, and so, we'll be following local, state, and federal requirements for the expansion.
Would the night, would Mr. Ritter's portion be in, already in the, would that count towards the...
It is actually more than covered in the project, so hopefully, the conversation earlier went to cost, and obviously, this was projected several years back, so there may be more cost involved when we actually start construction, so that hopefully, we'll have money to move into where we need.
When you go put it out to bid?
We will be meeting with DOT. The plans have to be drawn and submitted to NC DOT and approved by them before we can put it out to bid, so, what then?
Mr. Ritter has his part already done, and he's just waiting to be okay to turn Chris Anacalus on the structure part of it, and his mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineer to do the other part. And that, once that's done, he plans to be ready for this, probably within a week.
And we will be submitting those to them as soon as he finishes up with that, and I'm assuming we'll have a conversation. I think that email said next week, the email came this morning, so, so we should be meeting with him, and it will go, and, you know, I would love to see something good happen in 2021. 2020 was a hard year for transit, so we're...
But you've done a good job.
We are slowly but surely recovering.
Thank you for delivering the meals, Kim, that's so important.
We have been happy, it's something that we consider ourselves, as we are all sister agencies, and when Jennifer reached out, we were able to provide then, and we actually had to get a little creative recently in order to keep providing the same level of service that we were doing, so...
That addition probably won't live up to the standards of the building that you have now, would you think?
Well, you know, it's going to be hard to, but we'll have to have another plaque and all that good stuff, so, and I'd like to have, you know, I have 28 years in this June, so...
How old is that building then?
We moved in in 2003. Yep. That was one of those buildings that was supposed to last a long time, and, but because of the incredible snowballing growth of transit in this county, we outgrew it, we outgrew it within 10 years. So, we've been operating.
So, do you need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
We do. To authorize the contract, architectural services contract on Mr. Ritter.
So moved, and signed by county manager, I said.
Yep. Got a motion, my Commissioner Bill. Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Kim, have the address.
All right. Item I, resolution regarding abandonment of a portion of Old Dowell Mountain Road, request by NC DOT District Engineer Andy Russell. Mr. Manager?
Yes, this request was submitted by Mark Berry. The request was to abandon 275 feet of road along Dowell Mountain, State Road 1659. The Office of Transportation investigated it, found no adverse effects to the remaining adjacent site in the state highway system resulting from the proposed abandonment. Thus, they are requesting this board's consideration and adopting a resolution to abandon the proposed segment of State Road 1659.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Higdon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young, any questions?
Does this abandonment means what, Derek?
Well, I thought, all we, the only information that we've received about it is the letter.
It's very vague.
Your resolution's included in the agenda packet, but the only information that I've seen on this is what's included in the agenda packet.
It's down there by the storage units at Old...
Yeah.
Crystal, and it's just a dead end.
Just a little, it's just that little short.
Yeah. And he bought the storage unit.
And he... Does he own, he owns both pieces of property?
They're up for $400 per se.
I believe he's bought, I believe he's bought all that. That's just a connector.
He ain't buy the storage unit.
I read one from it.
Well, you didn't buy them yet.
I didn't, my family did, but...
I mean, I can't blame them, I mean, there's no reason to hold that road back there.
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Item J, discussion regarding possible change in agenda format concerning closed session. That's mine. We always have closed session at the very end of our meetings, and I'm just speaking from experience. When we're back there, we're tired, we're ready to get out of there, yeah, that's probably the time when we discuss some of the most important topics that we do as a board, and I'm just asking if we should probably discuss these at the beginning of the meeting, we're not being more prompt with our meetings back there, and we might be a little bit more fresh, and, well, you got to just default.
Let me just, Josh's experience is too, the school board does that manner this time, where they go on executive session after a few things. Only thing I've noticed, you've got a damn time, you're just sitting there as a person.
Public, yeah.
Public, just sitting there, and I get there at 6:00 or 5:30, but if they have a long meeting, you'd be sitting there, waiting to, for them to come back out and interact. And, but prior to that, when I was on the school board, we did it like we're doing now.
And I'm good with that, maybe just the leniency, if I think it, as chairman, if I think, or whoever's chairman, not, not be me, thinks it's going to be a controversial topic, that we need to have fresh minds on, maybe we'll, we might do it at the front, but other than that, maybe we'll just leave it as is.
We tried it one time in the middle, in the middle, like when you got the old business, most of the time, closed session is old business or something. So, we tried that, and, but it, sometimes it wouldn't last 10 minutes, and we use as little as anybody, that's teaching lasts for an hour or more, and you got those folks sitting there, that's the only... You got those folks sitting there, that's the only, we tried it in the middle, we have never tried on the front end. I don't know, the press would appreciate it.
The funny is, sometimes you're aware of the people that are working on you, and you progress in things.
Progress quickly.
Yeah.
Quicker than normal.
Right.
So, okay. Good deal. We'll move on. We'll take no action on that. Consent agenda, which is approve it or move whatever we need to out of it.
What happened on C with that, Chairman, or that, Mr. Manager?
I'll let, I'll let Derek give you the.
Yes, we sold the panoramic x-ray machine. It was part, originally part of the dental equipment that we auctioned to a local dentist, and we had the panoramic x-ray machine that did not get auctioned off. Local dentist came and requested that he wanted to buy it, so we went through the process. We surplus it. He submitted a bid of $4,000. We advertised that bid for upset. He, there was no upset bid that came in. He paid the $4,000. We delivered the machine. He later came and asked me for a refund. I told him that I couldn't refund it because we have no, I have no policy in place by where I can do that. And he then requested, what was the next step? And I said, the Board of Commissioners is the only, the only board that can waive fees. I reached out to each individual commissioner to try to gain consensus on refunding because I said, you know, I denied the, the request and received at that time a 3-2 consensus to, to refund that, to refund the amount for that x-ray machine.
Let's just, how about this? Let's just pull that one off, the consent agenda, and let's approve the rest of it. There's something else that we can discuss.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of C.
Mr. Chairman? Got a motion by Commissioner Bill. We'll get back to you, Josh.
Okay.
Second, second by Commissioner Schill's, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Good, aye, okay, good, yeah. That was fine, Mr. Chairman. All right, go ahead.
Sorry. Well, I mean, I just kind of want to make that vote public, and nothing, I've heard great things about Mr. Brenner, but I want to read on the contract that he signed right here on 12/17/20. Asset is sold as is, where is, and without warranty. Once the asset is removed from the seller's premises, there is no refund of monies previously paid. And I worry about the precedent we may set if we start selling assets all over the community and, and, look, this is, he bought this for cents on the dollar. And it's a contract, and I want to be clear that I was a no vote because of the contract. Nothing personal. He signed a contract, and I feel like I owe it to our taxpayers that if it was my money, I'd be a whole lot more apt to give it back to them, but it's not. I worry about the precedent we set.
Good point.
And that was a mallogic, you know? So we were the two, I guess, okay. But I'm good with it. Majority of the board? Majority rules.
All right. We've had this discussion. If it had been any of us on this board who had bought equipment and some of us out, that didn't make it 10 feet up the road and blowed up, I can attest that they don't give you your money back.
I agree.
So it's, it's one of those things that, and Josh is right, Dr. Brenner has done wonderful things for this community and continues with reading of that contract. You know, I'm, I'm sort of torn. Just wondered, Josh, would you consider, or Paul consider giving half his money back? And I don't have a good reason to do that.
You know, I thought Brenner serves on board, he has great, great assets for the community, but it's.
I know, I know. It's, it's not good.
Keep moving on the motion.
If we start selling on gov deals or we start selling somewhere, it's like, it's like a court.
Well, that's what I said. Another dentist was there, and he bought a lot of stuff. I was there at the auction. And if he has, you know, that's reason there's no warranty on it. If he starts bringing that stuff back.
I know.
We do, we do sell on gov deals normally.
Yeah, I mean, I bought something from gov deals, got it home, and it wasn't even crank, it flopped, and I lost my hind end. I mean, I did. Like, we've all been there, but when I sign a contract like that, I'm fully aware of that. It's part of the risk that I'm willing to take to put the money down. I mean, I'm sure it was a 30, 40, 50, $100,000 machine.
That's a great point. You can't deny that, Mr. Chairman.
And again, he's a great person, soft to the earth, but I just worry about what.
That's a great point.
Maybe, I think I approached it from a personal standpoint, like maybe all that, and out of the heart, and wanting to, hopefully, if I sold you a secondhand car and I told you it was a good car, that it would last, and I've had situations where they get down the road, and all of a sudden, the person walking back to the house saying, your car sitting down there, I'd like to have my money back, and I gave him the money just to be a good neighbor. So I think we take personal things and put in these things. Maybe we should look at the contract wording a little bit and try to, but.
I'll be happy to read that.
You read it, I understand it.
You still grabbing the car too?
Yeah. Yeah. But I didn't know if, and the wording of the contract is black and white to me, and that's the first time I'd heard it there, when you read it a while ago.
I mean, it's just, it's hard. Like you said, on a personal level, if this was my money and I sold him a chainsaw that didn't run, I would give him his money back. But it's hard in the position that I'm in as a representative of the county tax dollars. It's not my money.
And then, if you buy a dump truck from the DOT like somebody, I might even hit blows up before you get to McDonald's, it did. You're, you're hooked.
If this said right here, he had 30 days, or he had some kind of trial period and we'd work with him, I, I would for sure sympathize.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm saying. Maybe we should go, go, could look at that and see if there's a piece of, that you could use in there that would give a daily extension or hourly extension.
You've got to be careful.
Lori says you can't do that.
It's pretty black and white.
And again, that's why, you know, that's why we deny.
It's hard, it's just hard. Like I said, it's, it's a lot of money, he's a good guy. It's just tough.
Your thoughts, Mr. Chairman? I've spoken to Dr. Brenner about it, and he pleaded a good case with me, so I'm all in favor. I'm all in favor for, of, of giving the refund, so I guess we'll vote on it and see where we go. All right, all in favor of providing the refund, signify by a say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by a say aye.
Aye.
So how did we end up?
3-2. Totally understand, totally understand.
And I think Josh, I think Josh is exactly right. It's a bad precedent, but you got to look on the personal side. I know what this man, you know, you can't deny that.
All right. Appointments, Board of Equalization and Review, five seats. Want to get a motion to approve? Want to read them off?
Yes, please. I don't have that. I don't, I can't fill that up.
Bear with me, let me get to them. I can't remember them offhand. Those are the same ones we've had, I believe. Dwight Benson, Donald Holland, Gary Drake, Christine Plague, Richard Leitner. Term appointment is for one year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Schill's, all in favor.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, you can't let that go by without mentioning the name you don't see on there no more. And I think we talked about before, Rich Bankston.
Yeah.
Who served diligently on that board for probably two decades, so just want to remember that.
Volunterism tonight. Planning Board, we have two seats. Glenn Hedden and Carol Poindexter, three years.
Who's on, who does that job?
We think so.
Great guys. I'd make a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Bill, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Appointments are, gosh, we got out of here an hour quicker than I projected. I know we're going to have need for a closed session, and we will be taking action, or I presume we'll be taking action.
Yeah, purposes will be to potential property acquisition and personnel.
We're sorry, guys, we will be, we'll make it as quick as we can and get around to get out of here.
Is this yours to go into closed?
Motion by Commissioner Higdon, thank you, to go into closed session.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young, all in favor.
Aye.
All right.
I know you want. I know you want. We never had to be.
All right. Paul's back there.
Mr. Manager? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've received a, we've received a contract here to move forward with the selection of a full-time county attorney. We had a limited interview process. Many, many reputable law, legal professionals and law firms came before us, and at this time, we have received a county attorney appointment and fee agreement from the term of Ridenhour and Goss. And at this time, in looking over this fee agreement, we will need to incorporate into it a not-to-exceed amount. Lori, what is the, what is your recommendation in terms of the wording that should be incorporated for a not-to-exceed fee amount?
Can you give us the name of the attorney that'll be named, please?
Eric Ridenhour of Ridenhour and Goss.
Thank you.
Yes, under that first section there, there just needs to be added, whereas the billing over a 12-month period shall not exceed $120,000.
Okay. With that recommendation, Mr. Chairman, the disagreement is before you, and with incorporating that recommendation into this agreement, I now ask for.
Get a motion to approve on Mr. Eric Ridenhour as the new Macon County Attorney and approve this contract. Make a motion to approve, Mr. Ridenhour for county attorney. Got a motion by Mr. Young.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Higdon. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a say aye.
Aye.
Want to get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I was saying for the record, what was that? Was that five?
Five.
Five?
That was my understanding. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any say for a little bit, please say aye.